Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 10th meeting of the Bellingham City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with some, with a simple announcement that the City of Bellingham and the City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Illoquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Barnamans.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll begin this evening, per our usual protocol, with any public hearing. This evening, we have one public hearing to consider the rezone of portions of Area 10 and Area 11 in the Cordada neighborhood to allow for a new city park. After that, we'll have our 15-minute open public comment period. For the public hearing, how would you like to start? Lisa Poole? Do you know how to do that? So, the City's Parks and Recreation Department proposes revisions to the Bellingham Municipal Code and to the Cordada Neighborhood Plan to change the zoning for portions in Area 10 and Area 11 in the neighborhood plan from their current zoning, which is industrial, light, planned, to, and commercial, industrial, residential, multi, and mixed plan, change those designations to simply public to allow for a 20.6-acre park. The Bellingham Planning Commission held a public hearing on this subject on May 18th in 2017, and they voted 6-0 to recommend approval of their proposed changes. Lisa Poole?
Thank you. Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. You summarized that quite well, actually. This is just a very brief presentation highlighting some of the points of the rezone. So, I'll talk about the proposal, the site, a little bit of background analysis as it compares to the criteria, any public comments that we've received, as well as recommendations. So, as you stated, the rezone proposal was submitted by the City's Parks Department, and it's for 20.6 acres in the Cordada neighborhood. The existing zoning is industrial, light, planned, as well as commercial, industrial, residential, multi, mixed planned, to the proposed zoning, which is public, to allow for a new community park. And that does require amendments to not only the code, but also the Cordada Neighborhood Plan. So, here's a snapshot of the site, and outlined in pink is the 20.6-acre park, and this gray area is part of Area 10, which is industrial, and the orange speckled area is the mixed area, which is the remainder of the park, and it will become a new Area 22. Text amendments are also needed for the code for the entirety of Area 11, and that's because when Area 11 was rezoned in 2009 to its current mixed use, a requirement was included that a site plan must be submitted with development on Area 11 that includes a conceptual master plan, and that conceptual master plan did not include this park. So, that's why we have to make those text amendments to allow for the park. But the remainder of Area 11 will remain its existing mixed zoning. A little bit of background on the site. In 2009, as I stated, Area 11 was rezoned to its current mixed use. In 2015, the city purchased that property for a park. In November of 2016, the Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments was approved, and then in January of this year, the park was added to that docket, and in March, the pre-application neighborhood meeting was held for this rezone. And as staff went through the analysis, we found that the rezone meets the code criteria for comprehensive plan amendments, as well as rezones. A few highlights of that analysis. Staff found that it's consistent with the Growth Management Act's goals of open space and recreation. The Comp Plan and the Pro Plan, which is included in the Comp Plan, they include the park and support it with goals and policies. The public designation accommodates a myriad of government-related uses. It addresses changing circumstances in that the city purchased the property in 2015, the Greenways for Levy was passed in November 2016, and this project's included in the current budget. The park will also provide recreational opportunities in an area of the city that's underserved by parks, and it will result in less intense use than what it's currently zoned for, which means that it'll include better protection of the site's existing environmental features. So, we had no written public comments prior to the publication of the meeting packet. We also had no written or verbal testimony provided at the Planning Commission meeting, although through the comprehensive plan process, as you saw, we had a lot of public support from the neighborhood, and they just didn't come out for the rezone. Two members of the public attended the pre-application neighborhood meeting, and one of them was concerned about the wetlands on the site, and we assured them that we'll follow all state, local, and federal rules associated with that. So, this is a Type 6 process, which means that the Planning Commission holds a public hearing and issues findings of fact, conclusions, and recommendations to the City Council, and then City Council also holds a public hearing and adopts the final ordinance, and that's what tonight is for. And as you stated, on May 18th, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval to you of this proposal. So, with that, thank you for your time. Let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions from the City Council? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I didn't see anybody signed up. Could you, Lisa, check if anybody signed up? Okay, so I see no one signed up for the public hearing. The public hearing is still open. Is there anybody here who would like to come forward and make a comment on the rezone Come forward, just come over to the microphone, just state your name, and let us know what you have on your mind.
Lisa, could you maybe close the drawer on that?
I just have a short question slash comment. My name's Carly Storms, and I live in Ward 3. So, yeah, there's a current proposal for 24-hour lights at the Maritime Heritage Park, and there's also new music that's blaring, and it just seems to make it really inhabitable for houseless folks who are always there, and I just hope that you don't make it similarly inhabitable if you make a new park, which I'm totally for new parks, but I just want you to consider, like, parks that people can lie on, or benches that people can lie on and actually be comfortable on, instead of investing in infrastructure that's actively prohibiting people from being comfortable. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward to speak to this park plan? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Council. Is there any action you'd like to take? Roxanne?
I'd just like to move that we would pass the ordinance to rezone portions of Areas 10 and 11 in the Cordada neighborhood to allow for a brin new city park.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the rezone of portions of Area 10 and 11 of the Cordada neighborhood to allow for a new city park. Do we know what this park's gonna be named yet? It's just Cordada Park at this point? Yeah, we've got two Cordada Parks, gotta work that out. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor of approving the rezone, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. This was our third Comp Plan Amendment. We have two other prior ones. That means these will all three come back for our third and final?
It's your next meeting, yes, sir.
The next meeting. Okay. We'll now go to the public comment period. Terry, could you?
Yep.
I believe there were at least three people signed up. So, for those who aren't familiar, for the public comment period, you're allowed up to three minutes to talk to the City Council on a subject of interest to you. It's our time to just listen. We don't have a conversation back and forth. If you ask us questions, it should be a rhetorical question, because we're not gonna be answering it. Also, we ask the audience members to neither boo nor applaud if you hear something you like or don't like, just kind of be quiet about that, so that other people feel safe to say something that you may agree or disagree with. I see that there are almost two pages of people, so this will go over our normal 15-minute public comment period. Is there any objection to going over 15 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're gonna try to move through this quickly, but, oh, and there's a timer over here, a three-minute timer, so you can keep track. Junga Subadar, why don't you come forward? There's a buzzer, which will, or a bell will go off, when you have 30 seconds left, so that's the signal not to stop talking, but to wrap up your comments. So, Junga, if you would come forward, followed by Charlie Storrs and Dan McShane.
That's page 2.
That's page 2? Oh, I'm very sorry. Junga, I'm sorry.
No.
Page 1 starts with Deana Jensen, and then Chris Diley. Sorry about that.
Deana Jensen, Birch Bay. I want to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on land that is the traditional territory of the Lummi and Nuksek peoples. May we nurture our relationship with our coast Salish neighbors and the shared responsibilities to their homelands where we all reside today. I am here to ask the City Council and Mayor not to approve the jail, facility, finance, and use agreement. The amount of money that Bellingham City and County Councils have proposed to designate for programs that are alternatives to incarceration would not be available for use for a number of years, and it is dwarfed by the amount of money that would be spent by taxpayers as a result of the proposed sales tax on interest, construction, and operation costs of a facility that would not, according to the Vera Institute's recent findings, be a solution to our overcrowding situation. Meanwhile, the county executive felt prompted to indicate that the document that is drawn up to try to assure people that the spending of that $25 to $30 million will be on alternative programs may well not actually provide assurance that this is what those monies will be spent on. Most importantly, we need to not wait one day longer to expedite the renovating of our existing facility so that it is safe and humane. To quote Sheriff Alfo from the jail mailer that was sent out by the county administration for the jail sales tax in 2015, "The existing jail has been overcrowded and unsafe for decades, and while we have begun to address the overcrowding since then and must fund more programs for this, I have to ask what is wrong with us, that we have not done the obvious repairs needed to make the jail safe by now." On another subject, I was concerned to hear at their June 27th meeting, Waukesha County Council members were quick to express confidence in the sheriff and what his officers are doing regarding the safety of our undocumented community members without any of the council members having gone to members of the immigrant community to ask them about this. This certainly gives weight to the idea that there does need to be a citizen oversight committee to help all of our community members feel confident that it's not just the word of law enforcement that is relied on as truth regarding interactions with immigrant enforcement. I call on the City Council to move forward on forming a committee that will serve this purpose regarding city law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Diley is next, followed by Elizabeth Hartsch, and then Laura Norton.
Hi, my name is Chris Diley, homeless here in Bellingham. With a correction, I spoke last, at the last meeting, and I described the 10-year-old girl that was attacked up in, just east of Vancouver in British Columbia, and that was about 10 months ago, and she was attacked by a black bear, and it was not a grizzly. I had either read or I misread that it was a grizzly bear, so I wanted to make that clarification, because it is important, particularly with BC having a lot of black bear attacks on people, that it's far more frequent, actually, than grizzly bears attacking human beings, which is kind of interesting to anyone that follows the issue, especially Alaska, British Columbia. They've had a lot of black bears attacking people, and I don't mean to be alarmist, because I love bears, and I've had many encounters ever since we were attacked up in Alaska. Since then, I've had numerous encounters with bears in the woods, my dog and I, and none of them ever showed any aggression, so we've had really good experiences, but, on the other hand, there are a lot of attacks going on. Just Google bear attacks, if somewhere, and you'll see, there's a lot going on. And very quickly, I wanted to point out about, I've got a paper on Alcoholics Anonymous, and I referred to the abuse that I experienced in AA, particularly in Anchorage, AA, Alcoholics Anonymous, and I wanted to point out that the abuse that happens, because AA is religious, even though it tells people when you go in there, and this is very important to people that are court-ordered to AA, the first thing they're told is that AA is not religious, that it's a spiritual program. But I've been involved in it for 30 years, and I know, in the literature, it shows very clearly that AA is religious, and because of that, people that are gay, the dynamics involved, there can be very bad spiritual and psychological abuse, if not physical abuse. And I wrote a paper, and I've distributed it tonight, I give to the council members, and I'm doing that because it's, as was mentioned about the jail, and there being alternatives to jail, AA has been looked at as an alternative with people being court-ordered to AA, you know, as something effective to keep people out of going to jail if they have alcoholic problems and such, which, in that sense, it might be helpful. But in the other sense, it's, there is a separation of church and state, and the Serenity Prayer author, which AA utilizes that prayer, the author was Reinhold Niebuhr, Protestant theologian Reinhold Niebuhr, and in an interview with Mike Wallace, you can Google that online, Reinhold Niebuhr, Interview with Mike Wallace, Niebuhr makes it very clear that one of the most important principles in a democracy is the separation of church and state. So, you have AA meetings opening up with the Serenity Prayer, with the author believing that there should be a separation of church and state, so it's clearly inconsistent, and it's harmful for abuse. And my last point is, you don't know what hate groups are infiltrating the meetings, such as the Klan, Ku Klux Klan, that know the Bible backwards and forwards, and are utilizing that power, the state power, people being court-ordered to harm people. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Up next, Elizabeth Hartsch, followed by Laura Norton, and then Josh Soretti.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hartsch. Thanks for the opportunity to talk this evening. I'm here to ask you to vote on the Lummi Nation's water purchase request at your next meeting. The project would make use of overbuilt infrastructure and allow ratepayers to recover our investment, and will bring money into our water system. Now, it's the role of the council to review information and vote on the sale, but the process seems stuck, and it lacks predictability for the Lummi Nation. This is an opportunity for the city to be a collaborative partner and consider the Lummi Nation request expediently and in good faith. It's also an opportunity for us to support the Lummi Nation's self-sufficiency and self-determination. Across the US, communities are stepping forward to support tribal sovereignty, one small decision at a time, and this is an opportunity for us to do so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Laura Norton is next, followed by Josh Soretti, and then Joseph McDonald.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. My name is Laura Norton. This is the first time I've attended a Bellingham City Council meeting, and the first time I have felt that I needed to come and talk to you all. I am speaking to you because I have a deep concern for this proposal to help support this new jail, and I'm urging you to vote against that. I am, as a person of faith, I feel as though I really need to speak out about this. There's a group of us who have been at our church, who've been studying the issues of mass incarceration, and how it disproportionately affects people of color. There's some folks here from my faith communities, too, that I'm thankful for, as I'm a bit nervous speaking, but I just wanted to appeal to your, what I have is a vision for our community that includes a decrease in the emphasis on punishment, a decrease in the adverse impacts on people of color and low-income folks in our community, and I feel that this jail being moved out to the county and being made so large is going to go in the wrong direction, and I have a vision that I'd like you to kind of think about, too, just of having a community that invests in our community, invests in mental health services, invests in education, and in poverty reduction, and I do that, as I say, from my faith perspective. And I just think that, I would like to encourage us all to really value one another as human beings. I see everybody out there as being our sisters and brothers, and encourage you to think in those terms as well. So, I'm urging you, please, consider no voting, no on the jail facility use agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Soretti is next, followed by Joseph McDonald, and then Carly Storms.
Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone who's here today. I'm Josh Soretti. I live here in Bellingham, and I'm asking you all tonight to really show us some leadership and represent the people of Bellingham. I teach history up at Western, and one of the things I teach about is urban history, and something I've learned from the history of American cities in the 20th century is that bad planning can really kill a downtown, and that concentrating our public services in a downtown is one of the best ways to keep it healthy, to keep it vibrant, to keep our community secure in a really human way. Moving this jail, moving it out to the suburbs, not only is that going to have an environmental impact, the extra driving out to it, the land that it's going to take up, but it also really separates so many people from their communities, from the bus lines, the lawyers and businesses downtown that all serve around this dense area that's meant to serve the interests of the entire community. Moving this jail out, there are a lot of different reasons to go against it, depending on what perspective you're coming from, and I know that a lot of people on the council have expressed the idea that they might be against it personally, but that the City Council's role is to not really say anything about this. Well, I'd say we elected you to represent us, and standing up for the city means retaining really crucial resources. The economic benefits of having the jail downtown, the social benefits of having the jail downtown, both for those who are in it and those who are on the outside of it, are enormous, and I really feel like moving this jail, or agreeing to any agreement that would move this jail out, is really selling our city out. And so, you have the power to reject the JFF UA, and I ask you, I beg you to do so, because this is a really critical moment, not only for today, not only for the next year, and the next election, but the next 30 years, in this city and for this whole county. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Josh. Up next, Joseph McDonald, followed by Carly Storms, and then Edward Alexander.
My name is Joseph Pitaud, and you know I have a speech impediment. The person of the ordinance should recommend to people not to sign the petition of 1552. I believe this government trying to impose more conduct on society. Although I don't believe gay people should be blessed, and they have been in this city, and I have the pictures to prove it, I don't think the all-seeing eye of government should impose more conduct on people. Which, by the way, the all-seeing eye, along with the pyramid, are satanic symbols you can see on the back of the dollar bill. I believe this will prompt Republicans and other people, particularly fathers who wait for their daughters outside ladies' rooms, to phone in this city. Republicans are not all like Trump, but I question their choice to vote for him. It implies that they are mean and greedy. People must be thinking, we can't have the progressive liberals have their way, gay people break God's law. I would like to kindly remind people, Jesus said, "How can you say to your brother, 'Let me take the smack of dust out of your eye,' while you have a beam in yours?" He also said, "If you love me, keep my commandments." His greatest commandment above the ten is that we have love for one another, not necessarily to attend church. I would also like to kindly remind people that regardless of how well-intended your family has been throughout the generations, people who go to church on Sunday are breaking God's law, which I don't think God feels is any small potatoes, but you or anyone else, for that matters, for whatever reason, won't burn in hell forever. The prayers of hell do go up, and Jesus Christ is compassionate and not sadistic, like a lot of people think. Concerning the law of the land, I've often heard it said before, fascism will come to this country with a cross and a flag. I recommend to people that they do not support it. I think people need to ask themselves the question, what will I allow a monstrous government to do in a local and a national level? Thank you, and God bless America. What's still here?
Thank you, Joseph. Carly Storms is next, followed by Edward Alexander, and then Victoria Meade, please.
Hi, I'm Carly Storms, and I live in Ward 3. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote no on a new jail. You know that it is a bad deal for Bellingham, because the taxes are aggressive, the location is far, and it works against achieving any serious criminal justice reform in the long term. To say that voting yes on this tax is a decision made with the betterment of Bellingham residents in mind is ridiculous. You all know, because I've heard you fiercely advocate for alternatives to prison, that imprisonment of human beings at record levels is both a moral failure and an economic one. Voting yes tonight ultimately works against every citizen of the city and the county. Yes, we might get a projected $30 million to do our alternative programs here in Bellingham, but what about the hundreds of county residents that will be incarcerated because you chose to invest in a jail in their neighborhood? Or the hundreds of undocumented immigrants that could be placed in that jail if and when it doesn't get filled? All of those lives ruined by the system of mass incarceration will be on your hands if you vote yes today. I am also here to speak about divestment. This might not seem connected, but just give me a second. I understand that the City of Bellingham banks with US Bank. Bellingham No Dapple Coalition, along with many other Bellingham residents, had asked the city to divest from US Bank months ago, because of its investments with Energy Transfer Partners, the owner of the Dakota Access Pipeline. Nine months ago, the city passed a resolution to stand with Standing Rock. This whole time, the city continues to bank with US Bank. How can we bank with US Bank and at the same time congratulate ourselves for resolving to stand in solidarity with Standing Rock? Your words and actions are contradicting each other. Further, how can we bank with US Bank and then pat ourselves on the back for our progressive incarceration prevention and reduction task force? Yes, that is good work, but continuing our relationship with US Bank ultimately works against ever achieving the goal of criminal justice reform. US Bank Corp., the parent company of US Bank, is one of six main banks financing debt issued by Core Civic and the Geo Group, the two largest private corrections companies in the United States. US Bank enables these companies to make billions of dollars off of incarceration, and is complicit in a policy of mass incarceration that has devastated families and communities. And that is who we bank with. That is who we trust to manage our community's accounts. There is no big bank that progressive communities, that progressive communities like ours can trust with our money. To ensure that we're not working against our ultimate goals of clean water and air for everyone and criminal justice reform, we need to divest from US Bank immediately. There is no contractual obligation that is keeping you from doing that. The only way to ensure that our money is not invested in fossil fuels or in mass incarceration is to move our money from US Bank to a more trustworthy and community-based credit union or community bank. Tonight, vote no on the jail, and tomorrow, divest from US Bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Edward Alexander, followed by Victoria Meade, and then Jose Carillo.
I'm Edward Alexander. I live on 34th Street. In 2015, Bellingham City Council said no to mass incarceration. In 2015, excuse me, 2017, Bellingham did not agree to the proposals the county was giving us for funding. The county went ahead and put it on the ballot anyway, and it lost. And there's no way around it. A big part of that is because Bellingham didn't agree to it. I've heard from city council people that this is the best deal that we're gonna get, but it's not. If we set our sights low, if we just wanna be average, if we just wanna be like the rest of the world and be average, we would incarcerate 80% fewer people than we do now. That's a massive number. This jail right here that's connected to that building, its capacity is 212. You're gonna be signing on to finance a jail, the numbers keep changing, but the last number I saw was 480. Maybe it's something slightly different than that now, but that's twice the size of the jail that we have currently. The rest of the world is waking up to this whole nightmare that we've been going through since the Nixon era of mass incarceration. It took years and years to get to this point, and it's outrageous. If we don't, if Bellingham, if you, city council people, do not agree to this today, the county council may not put it on the ballot, and if it goes on the ballot, they may not win. So, this is in your hands. There's no way around that, and we have leverage. I've heard also that Bellingham doesn't have leverage here, because, well, the way I see it, the county doesn't have leverage. it, the county doesn't have leverage. They don't want to go through this without us. We are nearly half of the population here in Waukesha County. They need us. They need an agreement from Bellingham. Otherwise, they're going to be stuck with all sorts of inefficiencies that come from operating, you know, multiple jails. They need us. Don't give them $230 million. Don't stick us with a mortgage for 30 years that will eat up all the funds we need to reduce incarceration. Thanks.
Thank you. Victoria Matey is next, followed by Jose Carrillo, and then Junga Subedar.
Hello. My name is Victoria Matey, in case you forgot. So today, five out of seven of you voted to support the oppression and incarceration of people of color. Funding the new jail and supporting the relocation of the new jail is supporting a racist structure that this country was founded on and perpetuated to this day by the very people who benefit from it. Our jail industry is woven by structural racism made to criminalize black and brown folks. We are being incarcerated, detained, deported, all through unjust systems made to profit and benefit the white folk. The land of the free is underwater and being drowned by capitalism and racist structures. Instead of standing up for what this community believes in, many of you chose what you felt was best. Well, it isn't about you. It never was about you. And that's what makes all our grassroots organizations so strong, is that we realize it's not about any of us or our feelings. It's about the bigger picture. It's about the liberation of our communities that are tired of suffering under your authority. You all should be proud that your constituents care so much about local issues instead of blowing them off and complaining about it. At this point in time, we cannot rule out the possibilities of this new mega-jail, especially if relocated next to the Department of Homeland Security. We just can't rule anything out. I wish I could tell you to stop killing, detaining, and deporting us, but today, you voted and supported, and you voted in support of incarcerating and oppressing people of color.
Thank you. Jose Carrillo is next, followed by Junga Subedar, and then Charlie Storrs.
My name is Jose Carrillo, and I live here in Bellingham. I also am opposing the movement of the jail, but I'm here to talk more about just how the City Council is interacting with the community as a whole. The Bellingham City Council has continually shown that they do not care about marginalized groups in our community. The actions taken in instances where you had the chance to do what is right have shown the community that the council is not willing to listen and focuses on finding ways to not be held accountable. The sanctuary ordinance that was passed, which, to be clear, is in no way resembles any sort of real sanctuary ordinance, is a clear example of this. The council used child trafficking as the main excuse to not implement the sections of the ordinance which gave undocumented immigrants tangible protections. It sickens me that a topic as sensitive as child trafficking would be used as an excuse to justify negating protections for the people who need it, given that the original ordinance we proposed did in fact allow cooperation with immigration enforcement when it came to certain crimes, including child trafficking. You have a copy of that. You can read through it and find it. On top of this, the council removed the section about a civilian oversight board, the section which was essential to holding law enforcement accountable in regards to what the ordinance said, as well as in general. The excuse for this was, "We have the best law enforcement in the country." What constitutes the best law enforcement? Where is this information coming from? How can one claim we have the best law enforcement in the country when our police department is currently being sued for racial profiling? For a minute, let us assume we do have the best law enforcement, as you claim so. If this were the case, why would a civilian oversight board be of any issue? It would be instated, and since our law enforcement is so great, nothing would come of it. They would pass with flying colors while giving the community an opportunity to be involved in the review process. The whole narrative of our police being so great, like child trafficking narrative, is meant to distract us from the real issue by making it seem like we are against the police as a whole, or another example, by making it seem like we are not allowing law enforcement to stop child trafficking. There's no more time for unfounded excuses. You need to listen to our community. Pressure will continue to be put on the council as our community is informed in the way in which you are failing to represent us.
Thank you. Junga Subedar is next, followed by Charlie Storrs.
Good evening, Council, and members of the community. My name is Junga Subedar, and I'm a resident of Bellingham, Washington. I wanted to start off by clarifying something that was said outside. There was an interview given, and it seems like there was some claim that our jail was built in the 19th century. It was actually built in the 1980s. And I just wanted to clarify that for accurate factual information. And also, with that, the jail is fixable. There was an engineering report that showed that the foundation is good and that it is fixable. And then the county itself estimated that the cost to fix the jail was approximately $37 million. That is a lot less, obviously, than the $230 million initial budget for the new jail. So if the current jail is fixable, and there is an engineer's report that says that and confirms that, why wouldn't we fix the current jail? I mean, there was also funds for that in 2004 that has never been implemented to fixing this jail. Isn't it about time that we look at that instead of trying to raise more money on the taxpayers in Bellingham and in Waukesha County? For a new, and it's really not a jail, that's why we call it a mega-jail. It's really a prison complex that's being proposed here by the county. And I think that $230 million could be used so much better and for increasing public safety and the quality of life for the residents in Bellingham. And just to reiterate what Edward Alexander said, we can decrease incarceration by 30% and use the $230 million for mental health and public health, real alternatives in diversion programs, housing for the poor or homeless, our children, public education, early childhood education, and so much more. So I would urge you to do what is right and to do your part tonight, and vote against the jail facilities use agreement. Thank you.
Charlie Storrs, Roosevelt Neighborhood. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to you, and I also wanted to thank you for the excellent letter you wrote to the county council, summarizing some of the major points of why this is an incredibly bad joint use agreement. And as far as I'm aware, I don't think any of the points have been addressed, and I am disturbed at reports, I don't know if they're true or not, that you have gone ahead and approved the joint facility agreement. I want to make two points about the proposed new jail, which I don't think have been getting enough attention. One is the cost. Skagit County just built a new jail. I believe their jail is bigger than what is proposed. They did it for one-third of the money that the county is proposing spending. When you factor in the financing costs, they built a bigger jail for one-fifth of what the county is proposing. So just on the numbers game, this is the wrong jail. The other factor which is not being mentioned much is that there is no plan for lawyers to go out to the jail to visit their clients. All meetings between lawyers and clients will be via TV. All meetings between inmates and their mothers will be on TV. All meetings between mothers and their kids outside will also be on TV. No human contact. Most of the court appearances will be via TV. Now, there is a sheriff in Kansas who is in a whole lot of trouble because he intentionally recorded client-lawyer conversations. Bill Elfo is a good guy, and I'm sure he would not intentionally do that. He may not be sheriff forever. And we never, ever have a technical glitch. We never have an employee pushing the wrong button at the wrong time. The LaBounty Road site is just asking for a huge lawsuit. It is just an atrocious abrogation of everybody's constitutional rights. It is a disaster. Get away from this proposal as fast as you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Up next is Dan McShane, followed by Cora Cole, and after Cora will be Amy Glasser. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. I think after Dan McShane is Emily Merrill. I skipped that name, I'm sorry. Dan, then Emily, then Cora.
Yeah, Dan McShane, Bellingham. I speak to you tonight from the perspective of my eight years on the county council. When I first got on the county council, the majority was not supportive of Lumi Nation, sovereignty, or self-determination. And as a result, we came up short on a lot of our goals. One of my vows when I was on the county council was to change that. When we did get council members on who recognized tribal sovereignty, it was a tremendous benefit for our community as a whole and the county. The county council spends a great deal of time, work, and discussion on Growth Management Act. One thing I learned quickly is that the GMA rules do not apply to Indian trust land, and that we have no role in telling a sovereign nation what they can and can't do regarding land use planning. As you no doubt know, Bellingham has no zoning or permitting authority over sovereign nation. This goes back to the US Constitution. Tribal nations are not subordinate to states and cities. We cannot control, nor should we even imagine or try to control, a sovereign nation. The very idea is flawed, it's morally wrong, and it should remind us of a darker time in our history. We need to stay firmly on the right side of history. It could be that your code regarding selling water may have been designed to sell water to developers on the north end of the city while preventing the sale of water to Governor's Point, to the south of Bellingham, outside the UGA. It isn't a perfect fit with selling water to a sovereign nation. But as a legislative body, you have the discretion and authority to put this on your agenda and to vote. Here's the question before you: What's in the best interest of Bellingham? And I'm sure you take that seriously. To me, as a water ratepayer, selling water to Lumi Nation is very much in the best interest of Bellingham. The facilities are already in place. But also, as a citizen of Bellingham, I hope you represent our city well in this matter. As a city council member, you represent all of us, and I hope you honor the long relationship with Lumi Nation. Please respond to the Lumi Nation request and vote yes for selling the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Emily Merrill is next, followed by Cora Cole, and then Amy Glasser. Yeah, you can push the button up there, Emily, and speak.
All right. I'm here to speak in opposition to the new jail. My name is Emily Merrill. I don't know. My primary concern is that more jail beds means more incarceration, and Bellingham's incarceration rate is already, it's fairly, it's not high. I talked about this before. It's relatively high on the national level, or it was the state level, either. Relatively high and significantly higher than the average for industrialized nations. We could and should take action to lower imprisonment rates, and building a bigger jail basically ensures more people wind up in jail. I have heard that five of you have said that you will vote for this agreement tonight. I would implore you to please not do that, and I would like to thank the two of you who have said that you will not vote for this tonight. It is always in our best interests to reject a bad deal in this context, because it is likely that the citizens of the county will vote it down in that context, in which case the best deal we will get will be the deal that we decide to agree to. And if this is not a deal we decide to agree to, it is not a deal this county can force on us if the citizens of the county decide to vote against it, which is significantly more likely if we refuse to sign this agreement, basically. So I would like to ask you to vote against this agreement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Up next is Cora Cole, followed by Amy Glasser, and the last person to speak will be Andrew Echols.
Sorry. I'm Cora Cole. I'm a political science student at Western Washington University. I'm here to talk to you again about the jail proposal. You've heard a lot this evening about social and financial and logistical arguments for why putting it larger and further away is not necessarily a good idea. I'd like to specifically address an issue that I talked about a couple weeks ago, being namely that there are reserved behavioral issue beds. The mayor talked about this some time ago. I find all of the jail troubling, but this bit particularly troubling because of the way that incarceration of mentally ill and disabled people, particularly mentally ill and disabled people of color, can result in the dehumanization and force of violence upon those people. This is something that's a national trend, particularly in some East Coast states, but it's also a trend that we see here. When you reserve beds for behavioral issues instead of taking people who are exhibiting symptoms of disability or mental illness into like community areas that have support networks for those people, when you have those issues managed in the prison itself, you see more abuses on those people, both physical and power abuses, all of which result in continued violence and worsening of the issues that you try to resolve in the first place. I find this deeply troubling. I'd like to say that if you make these beds, they can and will be filled, and we should be investing in alternatives. On the 27th, the county talked a lot about being open to alternatives and saying that they were going to dedicate a significant portion of the money that they raised from this tax for alternatives to jailing. We can invest in alternatives without building the jail. The jail's a bad idea, the alternatives are a good idea. We should be skipping the middle bit, where we build a terrible jail that makes people's lives worse, and invest in the part where we try to make our communities safer. I'd like to thank, I believe, members Barker and Hamel for speaking up against the jail today, and I would like to, in advance, thank all of you who are going to join them in opposing this proposal. Don't vote yes because you think the county will vote yes. You have sway in this community and government, and you will get more support from your community members if you stand up against this project. Even if this ends up on the ballot, for each one of you who votes no on it tonight, that's more power that people have in organizing against it during the electoral process. We are going to work ourselves to the bone to stop this jail, and you can either be with us or against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Cora. Amy Glasser is next, and then Andrew Echols.
Good evening, Council. Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. I'm amazed to hear that you guys already maybe voted on this. I'm here to talk about the jail, and I think most of the issues have already been raised, but I think one of the issues is, we don't know how many beds we really need. It's cart before the horse. We just don't know. We have an incarceration and reduction task force that just spent two years coming up with ideas of how to reduce the rate, and we haven't done any of them. We have a Vera Institute that the county spent a lot of money on recommendations, and we haven't enacted any of their recommendations. We've spent time reducing, the city has done a great job of reducing the rate, but we keep getting more people in. We know if the beds are there, they'll be there. You send people out to Yakima. What's going to happen when we have a big jail? People are going to be sent here. It shouldn't be a money-making business. This should be about people. We know that five times the rate of black people that live in this city get arrested. The same for natives. We have good police, but they need more training, because the facts are the facts. The statistics state what they are. And they're incarcerating people at a higher rate of the population. It is what it is, and if we have a bigger jail, it's going to happen more. I'm a mental health worker, I'm a social worker, and I know that if you put houses down, and if you provide people with mental health and substance abuse services, they're not going to end up in jail. They're going to end up at home when they have a problem. They're not going to end up in the hospital and then get arrested because they have behavior problems. They'll end up at home, if they have a home. It costs about $10,000 to make a tiny home. It costs over $30,000 to incarcerate somebody for a year. How could you possibly want to vote for a system that does that? People who want to see their children out of jail, not in jail. I'll just take, ah, got a whole minute. Ferndale, are we insane? That property costs millions of dollars. It needs tens of million, $20 million. millions of dollars. It needs tens of million, $20 million to mitigate. It's on wetlands. It's got a corner that's contaminated. Who's calling it a safe place for the employees and the people who are in jail? I don't know, but it isn't anybody who's paying attention to the land. I don't understand why we're even thinking about Ferndale. It was a rush deal, and now we're being asked again to do a rush deal. You're being asked to hurry up and get it on the ballot. We do that again, and we're going to have the same mistake. Fix the jail now, just the way we're supposed to years ago. We have several million dollars waiting to build a new jail. Put it into the old jail. Sell the property in Ferndale and fix the jail. It has to get fixed regardless if we build a new jail or not. Fix it now. Don't wait another day. Period.
Thank you, Amy. Andrew is next.
My name is Andrew Echols. I want to thank you for taking the time to listen, and thank the community for being here. Just want to start and share just, for context with mass incarceration, we live in a nation that was born in slavery and genocide. The majority of this country's history is based on slavery, that was followed by Jim Crow. When the civil rights movement successfully beat back the segregation laws and beat back Jim Crow, the backlash was mass incarceration in the 1970s and 80s. We've seen, we've quintupled our rates of imprisoning people since 1980 in the United States. That's statistics about five years old, has probably increased since then. And that's primarily incarcerating people for nonviolent drug offenses. And these offenses prevent, hurt people's lives. Once you have jail time, once you have a criminal record for a nonviolent offense and are isolated from your family and community, the chances of getting back into community, not returning to homelessness, or not returning to crimes of poverty are significantly lower. The system is designed to harm people, and it does not make any of the rest of the community safer. This is, I encourage you to do your research. The new Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander is a great, fast piece you could read, to read up on that. Secondly, yeah, it's isolation. We are, if we're pending the jail to Ferndale, jail is already, creates isolation, which does not solve our problems. Putting it all the way out in Ferndale drastically exacerbates this problem by making people either, as one person said, have to teleconference in to talk to their loved ones who are incarcerated. I think so, what's been bothering me, I heard this piece that apparently I've already decided, there's a 5-2 vote on where this goes. That's very frustrating to hear after not getting to listen to the people. I think with a really critical piece with this, too, is, I watched Michael give an interview to King Five and basically spent the majority of the interview saying why you thought it was a bad idea, what you didn't like about it. But by rubber stamping it and having the city of Bellingham approve it, you're giving voters the signal that this is a good thing, that this is the best they're going to get. And it's not true. We can do so much better than this, and now we have to fight and reject this property tax again in a harder scenario where it's more likely for people to vote yes and for us to end up being stuck with this bad situation. So, it should go on your records if you do vote yes for it in the upcoming elections and the elections beyond that, that you supported this and you made this thing that you acknowledge be a bad thing, a bad idea, a bad use of taxpayer dollars. Acknowledge that and still put it ahead, put your rubber stamp on it, and gave voters the signal that they should vote yes for it. So, I encourage you to surprise us, change your minds, vote no. Not crossing my fingers, but that's what I believe you should do. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. That concludes our public comment period for today. And where are we? Okay. We will now go to committee reports, so the regularly standing committees. This morning at 10:30, the Planning Committee met, and that was chaired by Councilwoman Jean Knutson.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item on our agenda. It was our continuing work sessions on residential rental barriers concerns. This morning, we heard from Kelly Owens from the Northwest Justice Project. She's an attorney there. We heard from Mike Parker from the Opportunity Council. We also heard from Adrian Sodenberger from the Opportunity Council. And today, we had two motions made out of our committee, and I'm going to read those motions now. The first motion is to recommend to the council to direct staff to develop an ordinance including the following. Landlords provide increased notice for rent increases. Landlords provide increased notice to vacate with no cause. Source of income discrimination that is modeled after Vancouver's ordinance. And distribute information on voter registration and tenant rights. The committee recommends approval and I so move.
I just had a bite of chocolate.
What are you doing?
Lollygating?
Talk amongst yourselves. We have a motion before us, which is a direction to staff to develop, at least a framework of an ordinance, to eventually turn it into an ordinance that covers the issues you just outlined. Any discussion on this?
To give you a little bit more context, the reasoning that it says increased notice is, we discussed with staff a variety of different ordinances that are already out there. Some municipalities that do 45 days notice for rent increase, some that do 90, some that do it only if there's a more than 10% increase over 12 months, some that's more than 5%. So, we're asking staff that we certainly want something more than what there is, but we're asking for their recommendations. And then, they're going to come to us prior to drafting ordinance to give us an idea of what they found related to our community, and then we can give them even further direction on exactly what this body is interested in. Same with the, let me see. Also with voter registration, as well as the tenant rights, we had some constituents that really wanted things posted, but when we printed out the Tenant-Landlord Act, it's massive. And I don't know many people that would want that posted inside their residence. And so, asking staff to look at different ways, different municipalities that do that, as well as voter registration. So, it was a really, it was a really great way to do a committee, and I'm really glad that the council gave us that opportunity. And I really wanted to thank Dan Hamel, who has been doing a lot of this research over a very long period of time. And it's kind of neat to see it coming to fruition. So, I really hope that you all will support directing staff to work further on this ordinance.
Any further discussion on the motion to direct staff to work on drafting an ordinance to cover these rental issues? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, direction is given. Thank you very much.
The next one was a recommendation to the whole council to direct Mark and staff to develop a presentation for council regarding potential concerns involving mass residential vacations of low-income tenants, and potential incentives and/or legislation to ensure low-income tenants are protected in the future. This work should include tax credit properties, value and age of structure of mass rental properties, and other residential rental properties subject to reinvest. The committee recommends approval and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us, a rather more complicated issue. It has to do with massive or many evictions at the same time when a project turns over that may be evicting low-income residents, and what kind of protections we might want to have in place in those situations.
That's why we asked Mark and the staff to work together on this. So, this is going to take probably a little while to...
And identifying even which properties are vulnerable is difficult. So, then again, it's direction to staff. Terry?
I guess just for people watching, us voting to ask staff to do the research and draft them does not mean that by any way that we're supporting anything, because we haven't seen any, the council hasn't seen the information. And so, all this does is ask them to do that, so.
And the first one to draft, the one that's specific, to draft an ordinance, that's the first, but the second one, you're right, is to have staff bring stuff back to us.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on directing our council policy staff to investigate this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, direction is given.
End of committee.
Thank you very much. The next thing we had is kind of unusual. It was a council met this afternoon at 1:00 for a closed-record hearing to consider a petition to vacate the southerly 20 feet of Cody Avenue between 20th and 22nd Street. This afternoon, the city council made, take two actions. One, we accepted the hearing examiner's finding and recommendations to vacate the street, seeing no public need for it, and we accepted the recommendation of the accurate value to compensate the public for this land as $23,360. This afternoon, we have before us an ordinance which would enact those findings. Would someone like to make that motion, or shall I just?
Go move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the ordinance beginning on page 75, an ordinance relating to the vacation of this southerly 20 feet of Cody Avenue. Any further discussion on this? And Peter, are we handling this appropriately? Okay. All those in favor of approving this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That ordinance passes unanimously. Okay. The next item was, again, one of our standing committee meetings, and I believe that is Public Works, Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item before us today, and that was a bid award for the West Maplewood Avenue multimodal improvements. The West Maplewood multimodal improvement project involves roadway resurfacing, bicycle lanes, sidewalk improvements, streetlights upgrades, 1% for the arts element, and stormwater infrastructure on West Maplewood Avenue between Northwest Avenue and Alderwood Avenue. The city received six bids, which were publicly opened on July 3, 2017, ran construction. The general contractor was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $2,465,052.85, including any applicable Washington State tax or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $2,838,232.50. This is a project that has been a while in the making, that's involved a whole lot of community input. To get to this point, the committee recommended approval of the bid, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to approve a bid award to, for improvements, multimodal improvements on West Maplewood Avenue. Any further discussion on this? I just want to say that this, in my mind, kind of relates to a later item we'll have in the Cordada Park Plan. One of the things I really appreciate about the city's been doing over the last several years is identifying areas that are underserved, or areas where improvements are needed to be made, that we're trying to focus on, where we haven't focused, just for historical and accidental reasons sometimes, sometimes not. There are other areas that were actually redlining in previous generations. And so, I really appreciate kind of, these kind of targeted projects. Any further discussion on this bid award? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
End of committee report.
Okay, the next committee we had met this afternoon was Finance and Personnel. Roxanne Murphy is the chair of that committee.
We had one agenda item earlier today, and it was receiving a grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for distracted driving in the amount of $63,360. So, this is really important to our community. One thing I really want to express is that 56% of our crashes are due to distracted driving. So, I hope you all will please pay full attention when you're driving to help our community and help our cyclists, help our pedestrians, help keep crosswalks safe. So, what this grant will do, will help with officer time to work on this issue, and then also help with just that community education that we need to start doing throughout our community. The committee recommended approval of this, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion before us to receive the grant from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for distracted driving in the amount of $63,360. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0 with one member out of the room.
End of committee.
Thank you. The next finance, the next committee to meet was Parks and Recreation, and that's chaired by Councilwoman April Barker.
We had three items per committee. The first was community park and, community park in Cordada master plan adoption. We took no action on that, gave staff some direction. The second item was reject, reject a bid for Wacom Falls Park, Wilburn Trail and Parking. The committee recommended that we reject all bids, and I so move.
Second.
This is how we handle it? Okay. So, there's a motion before us to reject the bids for the Wacom Falls and Wilburn Trail parking improvements. I believe the staff recommendation was to actually come back with the same project at a later date. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That rejection passes 6-0 with one member out of the room.
And then our last item is updates on park level of service study, as well as the Greenway 4 planning efforts, park impact fees, potential relooking at those, and a parks prescription program that has been developed, I think the start with the Recreation Northwest has been a huge player in that. So, for those of you that are new to council meetings, we have, the bulk of our business is in the afternoon, and you can see all of that online. If you can't find that, you can certainly email the council, and we'll directly write to that link. It's a broad discussion. It has a lot of staff slides, so I think that would be best, if you're really interested in those, to watch them. But the park prescription is already actually live, and so you can go take a look at that on our website. It's basically a way that a doctor can take a look at what they're prescribing as far as activity for a person, and they can go to this place online. They can click certain things, like I want my client to take a very easy walk. Definitely, I want it walking, and I want them to be able to take their dog on leash. And then, I want it within, you know, the point so many miles away from them. They click that, and then it brings up the parks that actually have that, and then you can click on that park. So, there's a bunch of different things that a doctor might want to be prescribing to you, or different levels of things, like hiking, a gentle hike, or even biking at a pump track, like at Wacom Falls. So, you can take a look at that and give us some feedback on what you think. There's still in the mix. It's still got a little bit of kinks, but we're working on it, and it's really quite a unique and interesting thing. So, that was it, and end of committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further comments on any of that? Then we'll go on to the next committee, which was Community Economic Development. That committee is chaired by Councilwoman Pinky Vargas.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item in front of us today. It was the 2018-2022 Consolidated Planning Process Update and Discussion. This is the consolidated plan that has to be reviewed every five years, as required by HUD to guide the planning of projects and programs funded by the Federal Community Development Block Grant, often heard as CD BG funds. And what all of this means is, this is the programs, and the dedication, and the strategy for us to figure out affordable housing. So, this is obviously very important in regards to our process of fixing our housing system. This process is going to be going on, and this planning process and strategy, for the next year. What is really important to this process is public participation. There are lots of ways you can participate, but one of the simplest ways that I can tell you you can get involved is to go to the online survey, and the website is at cob.org/cpupdate. So, that's how you, as a community, can give different input in regards to things that you think we should be doing with this grant and with this money. So, there is also a couple other processes that I just wanted to mention. One of them is a Community Solutions Work Group, which will be hosted by Mayor Kelly and council members, sorry, council members Barker and Hamel will be participating on that as well. The entire strategy is in our booklet today, so if anybody's interested on that, it is online. But this is a way that you can participate in how we spend these funds in our community in regards to affordable housing. And that's all we have. End of committee.
Okay. Any further comments, any council members? We'll go on to the final committee, which is Committee of the Whole. We had three items before us today. The first of those was a memorandum of agreement between the city of Bellingham and Wacom County regarding their commitment, and ours, to incarceration reduction prevention. In response to a letter of the city council sent to Wacom County Council, they have proposed that the city of Bellingham and Wacom County both dedicate funding to incarceration alternatives. The interlocal agreement in the package before us assumes that the city of Bellingham agrees with the jail facility financing use agreement, and that the matters are heard about, and that it passes. If those don't happen, the agreement does not take effect. The agreement is also on the county council's agenda for tomorrow. This afternoon, the Committee of the Whole unanimously recommended approval of the agreement, and I so move.
Second. Discussion.
Okay. I guess I would like to indicate, I think I probably should have this before, the memorandum of agreement was modified, amended in two ways, so it goes back across the street to the county. There is a list of alternative programs, not exclusive list of programs that could be funded. They include jail alternative programs, electronic home monitoring instead of detention, work release and work group programs, mental health court, drug court, the establishment of a county pre-trial supervision program, and the expansion of the crisis triage facility, that is a place to take someone other than the jail. To that, there, we are, would also like to add the pre-trial risk assessment tool, and the GRACE program. Those are two of the leading recommendations by the Incarceration Reduction and Prevention Task Force. And so, they would be added. I'm going to suggest, just for grammatical sake, to add those at the beginning of the list, the pre-trial risk assessment tool and the GRACE program. The pre-trial risk assessment tool is designed to be able to release people on personal recognizance without bail, get them out of jail faster. And the GRACE program is really a pre-arrest kind of engagement program. The other was just the omission of one word in Part B, where it says the county agrees to use the public safety sales tax revenue or other legitimate funding sources on a dollar-for-dollar match up to the amount of 25% of the sales, net sales tax revenue, or $300,000, whichever is greater, and to fund these newer expanded incarceration, here's the missing word, prevention or reduction programs. The word prevention is included in the city's portion, it was just left out, in the county's portion. So, that is the, we are understanding that's the portion- So that is the, um, it was, we are understanding that's the portion that, uh, we moved, uh, and is before us tonight. Any further discussion of this? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. That passes unanimously, seven, zero. The next item before us is the, uh, interlocal jail facility and use agreement. This JFFUA describes the financial agreements, including the use of the public safety sales tax and the cost allocations for each participating jurisdiction. The JFFUA also describes the uses of the proposed facility as well as certain operational aspects of the existing facility. This afternoon, there was a mixed recommendation, five to two, to approve the agreement. Would someone like to make a motion?
I so move. Second.
We have a motion before us to approve the interlocal jail facility financing use agreement. Oh, and I forgot to mention one other thing. We did set conditions, uh, for, for the mayor for executing, uh, this agreement and also execute, if approved, and executing the memorandum of agreement. If approved, the county would have to agree to both of them. One of the concerns, we want to make sure that the county makes that monetary commitment, the $30 million that has to be contractually obligated, um, or, or the mayor wouldn't be authorized to sign either of these two agreements. Dan.
Um, this is going to take a couple of minutes. So I'm the representative from the city council that serves on the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force. I serve on the Behavioral Health Subcommittee. That's the Subcommittee that's creating the GRACE program. GRACE is Brown Level Response and Coordinated Engagement. I also served on the Legal and Justice Committee, uh, which, uh, came up with the pre-trial risk assessment tool. Both of those programs have, will have significant impacts on the jail population because they will prevent people from going into the jail, um, and address issues like substance use disorder and mental health illness. So I have, um, my perspective is, is that I don't think we know what the real numbers are in terms of what the size is or the location, but I wanted to articulate a few things here so you understand what my perspective is. Um, this, uh, number one, it's still a sales tax. We're the most regressive state in the union for taxes and adding another, uh, sales tax adds to the structural divide between rich and poor in Bellingham and Wacom County. Um, where, where, Washington is regarded as the worst state in the union to earn a low income, has the highest overall tax burden between the rich and poor, uh, and 8.9% was, which is what we would be paying, we're the same as, as Bellevue. The Ferndale location costs taxpayers $7 million and doesn't include expensive site mitigation. Um, Wacom County taxpayers, including Bellingham, have already paid for this once through real estate excise tax and general fund tax dollars and now taxpayers are being asked to pay for it again through a sales tax. Location takes Bellingham police officers away from the public, uh, keep, uh, keeping them safe while driving to and from the Ferndale location to book an arrest, um, uh, book, uh, arrestees. The county is asking Bellingham and other cities to pay for the demolition of the existing jail on Prospect Street, but only after we, uh, contribute to improvements of that jail. So we'll make improvements and then tear it down and they want us to pay for part of that. Additionally, Bellingham is being asked to pay 15.8% to the, um, to the, um, building of the jail when our actual use for misdemeanities is much lower, uh, even at its historic rate of 13.44%, that's still $291,000 that we'd be subsidizing Wacom County, uh, or $8.75 million for the next 30 years. And that doesn't factor in the 20% reduction that we've seen from electronic home monitoring. Um, so I think the, the number could be, uh, that we would subsidize, th- this facility would be much higher. But one of the main complaints that I have in this proposal is that the Bellingham City Council is being asked to do our work out of order in isolation of mitigating facts. We are not being asked to consider reforms or improvements to our local criminal justice system in determining the size, location or cost of the jail. In fact, those items are not even up for discussion. The only component that we're being asked to consider is Bellingham's contribution to the building of the facility. The fundamental problem with getting a new facility built is the lack of understanding on the county's part that decision, decision makers, including informed voters, need data and evidence to reach a conclusion. We have just over one year's worth of data on Bellingham's electronic home monitoring program. What happens when the county and small cities implement their versions of this program in a meaningful way? How will that affect the jail population? How will new intervention programs like GRACE, like the pre-trial risk assessment I mentioned, increase release on personal recognizance and police field discretion favoring citations or warnings versus arrest affect the numbers? What happens if the county sends their long-term post-conviction offenders to Yakima? That comprises most of the population in the jail. And more broadly, how will we, how will sustained investments in our children, like the Bellingham Promise, stewards of children or groups like Futures Northwest affect crime rates in the next 30 years? When kids are loved and supported, encouraged and connected to their community, I think they end up in jobs and in school, not in the jail. The salient point is that without the data, we are being asked to sign off on a facility whose actual size and therefore cost is really unknown. Is it 521 beds like last year or two years ago? Is it 440, 380? 10 years ago, the number was 900. We don't have the real number because we don't have the real data until today. This is the Vera Institute Report, um, a data-driven understanding of the Wacom County justice system. Uh, I'll, I'll read the conclusion. I read it this afternoon. Through inter-agency collaboration and coordination, Wacom County must address the systemic drivers of jail population growth. This is the only effective means of controlling jail growth. Any attempt to ease overcrowding by building a new facility or expanding the current one will not address the underlying causes of population growth and the new facility will quickly become overcrowded. Criminal justice and community stakeholders must work together to achieve a safe, sustainable and fair justice system. I stand behind that conclusion. These are the experts. I think, um, I, I, I'm going to, I'm not going to vote for the jail facility use agreement because I don't think it's the right thing to do.
Please, um, I may have mentioned earlier, uh, our standards here are that you don't boo if someone says something you don't like and you don't cheer or clap if someone says something you do like. We try to keep it neutral in here, therefore it's safe for people to express diverging, uh, opinions and disagree with each other. Thank you. Dan, you finished?
Uh, I'm done.
You're good? Terry?
Yeah, I will. In the past, well, two years ago when this came up, I was maybe one of the strongest opponents to the jail agreement. And we were able to state quite clearly why we were in opposition to this, about the size, about fun, funding mechanisms, about the unfairness to, to Bellingham and the proportion that Bellingham was paying. Uh, were just some of the issues as well as location. Uh, through the committee that worked to negotiate the second, but I did say also at that time, with this going down, I told the county executive, I'd be glad to work with and support, uh, a different agreement because having worked in the justice system for over 20, for 20 years, I know what the system, uh, what condition the jail is in and that it needs to be replaced. Or it could be everyone moved out and renovated maybe, but then you got to build something to put, uh, everybody in until that kind of thing can happen. And I was still in opposition to this, uh, a few weeks ago when we sent the letter to the county because we still hadn't come far enough. Uh, Gene and Pinky and the mayor did a great job in negotiating and reducing the numbers down to a level of where we, the council had said two years ago, we were, of what we wanted to see. Because two years ago, those numbers were, uh, up to 521 and an additional 128 beds possible in phase two, which was 749 beds. The current one has been negotiated down to, um, uh, 440 and, uh, 36 beds for medical and behavioral health. A sudden, significant drop in those numbers. I still think the numbers are going to be lower because one of my other big problems with this is there was no guaranteed funding for alternatives to detention or alternatives to incarceration. And I had seen how the county operated in the past with, with, uh, the juvenile, uh, facility, because I worked in Ju, in the Juvenile Justice Administration. We were bumping up to full capacity close to 20, around 20 years ago. And they were talking about having to build a new jail. And we put in place because of that, a whole bunch of different programs, uh, with alternatives. And we were able to reduce the numbers and reduce recidivism, but as soon as we started having, uh, economic downturn, those programs were the first thing to be cut. Everything that was not state mandated, the programs were all cut out of it. So I was really concerned in this, uh, proposal that there wasn't money guaranteed, just language. Well, we did, were able to talk with the county council with the letter and with the other points, because that was one of them, and being able to negotiate into it, the agreement that, uh, interlocal that we just passed, putting guaranteed money into it for alternatives to detention. And I truly believe that's going to help reduce it even, even more. But I do feel at this point, because we were able to do that, it got me to a point I can agree with this. Somebody had said in one of the testimonies that this council was afraid to tell the county council that we are against that location. Well, we told them, folks. We've told them and we continue to tell them that we still don't like that location, but they are the ones who decide. So tell them if you can get them to change because they make the decision. They will, and they can change their mind. They will also make the decision on the ultimate, uh, size within, within the range. So we should push, continue to push to keep them down. But tonight, I feel we are at a point where, well, just a couple more points, and that has to do with location. Yeah, I think the Labani Road, Bounty Road is not the best situation. I would prefer it downtown. But, and somebody today had brought up about, we don't know the unintended consequences of moving out there. One of the things we do know is if we don't, uh, go, uh, sign onto the jail and it passes, we have two alternatives. Either to build our own jail, which is really expensive, not just to build the jail, but to train, hire staff, uh, and pay the salaries and the retirement, on and on and on, the cost of that. Or the other alternative, which is cheaper, and that's what we had to do before, send our residents over to Wenatchee. And we know the unintended consequences of that. We know the strain on families. We know the strain on, on the police officers and the cost. So given those things, I am going to support it.
Councilmembers, anyone who speaks?
Yes.
Thank you.
So first of all, this is incredibly complex and challenging and many of us have lost a lot of sleep on making this decision. This is not easy. And, uh, two years ago, I voted no on this proposal. And, and the reason that I served on the Jail Task Force Committee for the last year is because I was incredibly concerned about the importance of reducing incarceration and ensuring we were prioritizing alternative programs and diversion programs. That was very important to me and that's what we went ahead to try and do and I think we were very successful in that. I also wanted us to focus on how we were going to help people with mental health in our jails or maybe even not putting them in jail altogether. So these are the things that are important to us. Another issue was that I wanted to ensure that I was negotiating for the people of Bellingham and that we were getting a fair deal in regards to our financial commitment. And I feel, I feel, um, I feel like the numbers that we are paying for right now are fair. And, and I stand behind those year, that year of negotiations because I'll tell you, in the beginning, when we all sat at the table, there were people who couldn't even look each other in the eye. There are people who didn't want to discuss this at all. And I would tell you that Gene and I and, and Mayor Kelly went to bat to ensure that we were trying to do the best that we could to put the residents of Bellingham first and to take care of people who can't stand up for themselves. So I will say that weighing all of those things and getting very deep into this very, very complex problem for the last year, I know that we cannot afford to run our own facility. I know that we need to do things better. So the only way that we can do this is if we do it together and that means we all take the burden of the cost and it means we all do the right thing. That means everybody participates in diversion alteration and we look at reducing incarceration. If we truly want to make a difference for the people who are incarcerated in the City of Bellingham, they need to get out of that jail. That jail is inhumane and it is unsafe. And the only way that we can provide proper programs and services and a better quality of life is to have a facility that can provide that. We can't just restructure that box and turn it into the Taj Mahal. It's never going to be that. In order to have programs, we need to have rooms for those. We don't even have a library. We have no place for people in this jail to go. Whether you are, whether it's mental health or if you're there because you made the wrong choices, everybody deserves a decent quality of life and there is nothing about that jail right now that is decent or humane. We have an opportunity right now. This doesn't mean that we build that jail and we do the same thing we did yesterday. This means that we look at things like the Vera Institute Report. We look at the GRACE programs and we have an opportunity to design and go forward with something that is progressive and helps people and makes a difference. And the only way we can do that, because we can't do that in that old breakdown box over there. And I know, I think every single council member has been in that jail and knows exactly what that looks like and it's, it's not a great place for anybody who works or who has to be there whether they want to or not. So, yeah, I'm going to vote for this and I'm going to vote for this because I think it's the right thing to do for the people who live here. And I, I think that we have an opportunity right now to make that jail. We can be leaders. We can be leaders by putting the right kinds of programs into this, into this incarcer, into incarceration that allows people to have a different life, to maybe make different choices, to reduce recidivism. And if we can do those things, then we are making a difference, but we can't do it in that box. Tell you, it's awful. And I, I want to tell you that I have a little bit of an issue with broad strokes of calling us racist. Cause I need to tell you that, um, I know I'm Caucasian, it's pretty obvious, but my family's pretty colorful. You don't all see the rest of my family. And when my cousin was 17 years old, he was one of the smartest, brightest kids that I knew. And he was 17 years old and he went to jail for 20 years for being in the wrong place at the wrong time just because he was black. So don't tell me that I don't understand what it's like for a family to be robbed of their children and going to jail for the wrong reasons. And that is part of the reasons that I do the work that I do because I am fighting for those people. I am fighting for those who don't have the money to support for, to ask for the, uh, big, I, I recognize that our, our criminal justice system is broken and a lot of times people get away with things because they have the money. And the wrong people or the people who are, don't have the money to fight for themselves often get caught in the system and that's what we need to change. And we have an opportunity to change the system by taking the things that we're learning out of these reports, out of these task force. And, um, uh, Councilmember Barker suggested today that we have a justice committee to actually look at what we're doing in our criminal justice system. So I just, I just wanted to say that I honestly believe that we are doing this in the best interest of people here in Bellingham. And I know some of you aren't going to understand that and I know some of you aren't going to support that, but I just want you to know fully and heartily that I do believe that we are going to do the best that we can going forward by funding the things that we need to do. So I'm, I'm voting for the jail. Oh, and by the way, talk to the county about the size and the location. We can't change that.
April.
Um, I always encourage, uh, you all to watch our afternoon meetings. I did it earlier and I, I think it's really important that you, um, I think- I, I think it's really important that you, I think everybody learns how this system works, and they can follow along beyond just when a really important issue comes up. Because this issue goes far beyond its inequity, and it goes far beyond just the criminal justice system. You, you pull on the net, and it will pull housing, it will pull so many other issues. And if we simply look at this as a jail, we're missing the point. I think it's why I went to the county council members and discussed, this is a public safety tax. And I've noticed that that term's being used now, because we're now dedicating 25% of the monies toward diversions. But that doesn't make this tax any different than what it already was. It was a jail tax, and it still is a jail tax. The public safety tax deals with all the things that we're being hit with as a council. So we're right now, I hear often, we're in a homelessness crisis, we're in an affordable housing crisis, and we're in a criminal justice crisis. And I often, I have nine and 11-year-olds, and I always tell them, when they're in that moment of a crisis, they're, they're in their emotional brain, and they need to take a moment, and they need to deep breathe, and they need to use the other parts of their brain, those thinking pieces that can help them understand what the next step is. Because if they respond in a crisis moment, they're going to create more crisis. It's just how it works. I deal with students all the time, and it's something that we always tell them. And I think right now, in our society, we keep responding in crisis mode. And, and what we're going to do is, my children are going to come up in 20 years, and we're going to hand them more crisis, because it's so difficult to stop. And people are going to get hurt, and uncomfortable things are going to happen. But it makes us really focus in and use that, that part of our brain that makes the connections. And so, you know, I appreciate the Vera Institute. I, I wish that that was videotaped and that we could have watched it. We were in the middle of doing our planning committee and, and advocating for source of income discrimination when that was being presented. So I'm glad that you were able to go and make it back for both. My, my two-year-old was diagnosed with arthritis, and I learned two words I'd never had heard before. And one was idiopathic, and one was systemic. And I remember, like, talking with the children doctors and being like, what do those words mean? Like, my kid is just really sick, and please tell me. And so they had to really dumb it down for me. But idiopathic was, we don't know why your kid has this. And systemic was, he has it all over his body. So it's not just like his knees, it's his neck one day and his shoulder. And, and I think that this report says, this is systemic. This is all over. And if we just focus on one piece, we're in a lot of trouble. It's not idiopathic, though. We know exactly where it came from. This was designed, this, these processes, these systems that we have, they were very much designed. And I think that's our opportunity to take a step back and give our county council what we did in that letter. I do appreciate the give and take that happened, but ultimately, it's just, things are out of order. We're finally getting to the place where we need to go, and, and we're going to respond, in my opinion, in crisis mode. And I do ultimately respect all of my other council members, and the county council as well. I mean, I'm really amazed at how, well, we can have these difficult, and then we move right to the next thing and deal with source of income discrimination, or whatever that is. So I do have the utmost respect for each one of these individuals. They're, they're fighting a difficult fight, and they truly believe something different than, than what you or I believe. And so I, I hope you'll understand how hard that everybody works up here, and still be extremely respectful to each of them for their decision. I'm ultimately, of course, a no vote. I've been a no vote all along. I'll say my last thing. I say this often to a lot of constituents, but something always sticks in my mind. My mom always told me when I was dating, and you guys probably are like, oh, she's saying it again. She'd always tell me, April, you have to listen to what they do and not to what they say. And I've always, like, I keep that in my heart whenever I'm making decisions up here. So when we did, although not everybody felt like we did it as far as we needed to with immigration reform and some changes in policing, this is still another example. We, we made a resolution within, that said, we want to care about all people and make sure all people are protected. Well, we have created for some, a very sacred bubble inside Bellingham. For some of the families that I deal with and work with, they don't want to go outside of the city of Bellingham. And we know that a disproportionate number of those families are the ones that are incarcerated. And, and now we're going to be asking them to go visit their family members who are disproportionately jailed, to go outside of, of their safety bubble that we've been trying to create here in Bellingham. So it's, it's so many different reasons that if that is the only location, I just need to understand exactly why, and I haven't been shown that. I also don't believe that we have any idea of what the impacts will be for moving this jail. I just, I don't. I think it's unfortunate that all the money that we get back, it might just be more FTEs, more full-time police officers, only because they're offline, not because we have new social service officers and mental health officers and people to ride along with the community paramedic. Because more than likely, we're going to find out that we're going to have to subsidize WTA, we're going to have to find more officers, whatever that is. And I think that that's very unfortunate. This is about $11 million a year, as I can calculate, because it's about $350 million by 2048. And that's after bond payments. That does not include the monies that we'll be paying for booking fees and others. And that'll be 2048. In the year 2044, this nation will be a majority minority. That means the entire population will be more people of color. And I think that's a beautiful thing in some ways, but these systems don't intuitively change themselves. This, we do it right now. So that's my plea.
I guess I'd like to say a few words. All along, I think that this, the county's approach to this has been unbalanced. It's a fundamental difference in philosophy. I, I think that there are people who believe that our community is safer when more people are locked up. I think the community is safer when there are fewer people committing crimes. There is fewer reasons to lock people up. It's called a public safety tax. Under law, it always should have been a public safety tax, but you know, de facto, it had become a jail tax, and that was what was wrong with it, is that it was all about the jail. The original proposal was to use, like, 100% of the money for the jail, sucking all the air out of the room. The new agreement, financially speaking, leaves the city with half of the money not going into the jail. And it's those dollars that we can use to rebalance the picture. It's those dollars that we would have to pay for addiction treatment, to pay for mental health programs, to pay for support programs for retraining and reentry, so people can, you know, not return to the cycle of crime, or just programs to divert them before they even get arrested, like the Triage Center or the Grace Program. Those are the sorts of things we would have money for now. That's the rebalancing that I would like to see. But more than that, we've now negotiated an agreement where the county too is obligated to pay for those alternatives. There is now money that would be set aside, now baked into the set of legal agreements, and what happens to with the money. To me, the fundamental flaw with the approach has been addressed, that there was no money for the alternatives, no guarantees for it. Well, now there's money, now there's guarantees. With that fundamental problem out of the way, and the fundamental problem that Pinky talked about, where the city's being asked to pay too much. And the other fundamental issue is, there was no such thing as the Vera Institute report. There was no such thing as the Incarceration Reduction Prevention Task Force. Right after that one failed, several council members and I, county council members and city council members, we got together and said, what do we really want to do on justice? We talked about it, we developed an idea. The county council introduced a series of principles. And again, they focused on public safety first. They focused on addressing root causes. They focused on healing and improving lives, rather than just simply punishing people who made the wrong choices, or through disability or dysfunction or addiction, committed crimes. You know, that's, that's the orientation that I've been fighting for all along. I haven't succeeded in everything. The location is wrong. We're keeping asked. Don't vote to move the jail. We wouldn't. None of us up here, I don't think. I, I feel like, maybe I can speak for all of you. I certainly wouldn't vote to move the jail. Never wanted to move the jail. It's never been a good idea at all for me, ever. But I've talked to the county council about that. We've sent a letter to the county council about that. They know we don't like the location. They haven't changed on that. They spent their money years ago, and they've committed to it. Tried to change it, can't change it. Well, so what can we do? Well, A, we readjust the fundamental imbalance. B, we've addressed the unfairness of it. You know, what else is in here? Well, the other big thing people attack is the size of the jail, the mega jail, the, the mass incarceration jail. That's hyperbole. It's, it's not actually true. This isn't the 1,000-bed jail it once was, or the 800, or the 600, or the 500-bed jail it once was. It's a much smaller jail. No, there's not 220 people in the jail. It's 330, you have to remember. There's a second jail facility, the Work Center, which, by the way, if you've been there, is also not a great place to be. It's also fundamentally misdesigned, fundamentally unsafe. So there's actually 330 people who are currently in jails. It's called the average daily population. And so a 440-bed jail isn't so unreasonable. It's not the mega jail it once was. You know, people say, you shouldn't be funding the jail. It's a moneymaker. It's not a moneymaker. It's a money loser. Cuss every one of us a lot of money. We're spending, I think, $1.6 million a year we send across the way to take care of our prisoners. And we're trying to find ways to reduce that number by releasing people early, electronic home monitoring alternatives. We're trying to drive that money down. No one's making money off of this jail. Maybe the people will build it, but not us, not the public. That's why we've been fighting for a smaller jail. That's why I want to pay $30 million for alternatives, because I think those will return far more than that in benefits and savings, moral benefits and financial savings. It's not a perfect plan. Yeah, it reduces a regressive sales tax. I don't like that. But you know what? We also have an even more regressive tax right here in Bellingham, 11% utility tax on basic fundamentals. Every time it comes up, an opportunity, I bring that up. I would like to see fundamental tax reform. I think there's an opportunity for us, when we look at other financial things, to reduce that regressive tax. I'm concerned about regressive taxes, but, you know, I, I said, we went over to the county council, I said that what you need to do is understand the drivers of your capital spending. It's a fundamental principle the city of Bellingham adopted several years ago. If we're going to have to spend a whole lot of money on something, we don't know why we're spending money on this. We just spent $50 million on a sewage treatment plant. But before we did that, we said, why is it costing so much to expand the sewage treatment plant? Turns out, half the reason is we have leaky pipes. I didn't know this, but turns out, water leaks into pipes, not out of pipes. Wet ground in rainy season, water flows in, you get excess water going in the sewage treatment plant. You've got to build a much larger plant to deal with that extra volume, and millions and millions of gallons. Or you've spent a lot less money and fixed the leaky pipes, which is what we did. We understood the drivers for that huge capital project, and we saved ourselves money. I think the county should have done that before. The county is now starting to do that. The county now has the Incarceration Reduction Task Force recommendations, and the county now has the Vera Institute. So I'm hoping now, there's a broader understanding of the drivers. I'm hoping now, we can agree on, on what kind of benefits we can have. In the next few months, I'm hoping that the, the county and the task force and everyone gets on board in addressing those drivers of the jail population, so we can keep the population as low as possible. That's our goal. But what's before us today is a cost-sharing agreement. And there's nothing wrong with a cost-sharing agreement. The cost-sharing is, is fair. The cost-sharing agreement is not to blame. The location is not great. The sales tax, not perfect. The size shouldn't be determined yet. I get all of that. But as you said, Pinky, that over there is not the jail we want. Even if we were to have it fixed up for us free, it's still not the jail we want. If you think that people need to be treated humanely and given a chance to mend their ways and not be made hardened criminals, then you don't want them in that jail, even if it is fixed up. You want them in a new jail, a humane jail. And I'd like that humane jail to be located right here in downtown Bellingham. Thank you. Sorry I went on so long. Roxanne?
As a member of the Noxak Indian Tribe, you can imagine this has been anything but easy for me. Also with a master's degree in public administration and a very level head about governance. So one thing I'd like to start by saying is that my tribe in particular, and so many tribes, have these incredible programs, and programs that are growing and improving the lives of our tribal members, so that it's the ultimate hope, that they will not use substances, they will not go to jail, and they will live a better life. These are programs through social services, through the youth department that I manage, through Indian child welfare, through, you know, you can imagine, our court system works to improve this, everything. In spite of all of that, we still have to send our tribal members to jail. Things happen, and we need to provide protections for our people. And so for that reason, and others that I will state, I would really rather that the tribal members that go to the jail have a better circumstance with better services behind them, so that when they come home, we can continue to rehabilitate, rehabilitate our people our way, with our culture. But we need help with that. It was really scary the last time we said no on this. The voters said no, and then we wound up with some booking restrictions for the city of Bellingham. That was terrifying to me, as somebody who fights against domestic violence. And it was very scary to think that people that committed crimes like domestic violence might not have a place to go until we got our systems in place to deal with that at the city level. I'm not saying that the county would do that again, but I'm saying that the county had the authority to do that to us in the first place, and that was awful to go through. With this current issue, we have so many different perspectives at play. So definitely, I recognize all of your concerns and all of the feedback that you have, every testimony, bit of testimony that you provided. We also have been knocked on, our door's been knocked on, by people that work in the jail, and that feel very insecure about their safety going to work every day. And then I also worry about the safeties and security of the inmates. If something bad were to happen, and I would vote no, this would weigh so heavy on my psychology. And how would I deal with that? That I belabored an issue even further, knowing that we already had an unsafe circumstance. If there was a fatality, how would that weigh on my psychology? This is really, makes it a very complicated situation. At the same time, I'm really worried that if we vote no, the tremendous cost it would create for our city. And one of our major responsibilities up here is fiduciary responsibility in managing our dollars in the best way that we can. I know this isn't an ideal situation. I know this isn't for everybody. But when we have so many competing forces aligning all at once, the fairest thing I can do is ask the voters to please have say. Turn it to the voters, so you can vote no, so you can vote yes, so you can vote any way you want. Because that's the thing that makes the most sense to me at this point. That's the thing that I can be the most fair with. I mean, it's not going to be ideal at any point. We're always going to have adversaries about a jail. But I just have to believe that this is something we have to try, and the voters will have their say, and it will be determined what it is that are our community values through your vote. So I'll be supporting this.
Jean?
Yeah, I want to start out by echoing what April said a while ago. It is a pleasure to sit up here and serve with people who can disagree and not be disagreeable, and be able to sit up here or go to functions together and speak to each other. But for me, I go, I'm going to go back to 1994. One of the first issues I was faced with as a newly elected council member was a $6 million lawsuit by Watkin County, because the city of Bellingham refused to pay their per day share of the jail, because we weren't getting itemized bills on what the heck we were paying for. So we held out for as long as we could until we were facing that lawsuit. And when Mayor Mark and Pete got elected, they hammered that out, and they got it figured out. And from that point on, we've always had a great relationship when it comes to the jail, until what happened two years ago. This jail goes beyond just the jail. It, the relationship that we have with the Watkin County Council is very important. And the fact that we were able to hammer out a better deal financially for the city of Bellingham, because if people think Ferndale isn't the right location, I don't think Yakima is either, because that's where they're going to go. And that's because we cannot build a new jail. The economics of that doesn't pan out for us at all. The mayor's never wanted to be in the jail business. The city's never wanted to be in the jail business. I applaud everything we're doing by trying to keep as many people out of jail as possible. But this is the right position for the city of Bellingham to take. It's now up to the county council, and the fact that all jurisdictions are on board, there shouldn't be any more messing with restrictions and that kind of thing. We're all on the same page. And I, I just think it's the best thing for us to do. And, and the vote tomorrow night will tell us which way they're going to go. But we've done our job. And I want to really thank Terry and Michael for their working with Carl, Sap Paul, and Rudd on this. Thanks for taking the extra time and the extra will to, to hammer this out. Because in my opinion, the mayor's office, the city council, the county council, the county executive, we've all gone to the wall on it now. This is it. And it's up to the voters of Watkin County.
Any further discussion? We have a motion before us today to approve, sorry, I have to turn the pages, approve an interlocal agreement known as a jail facilities financing and use agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
That passes 5 to 2. Thank you very much. The third item has to do with the jail also, but is for information only. It is the county's ordinance, which they would pass to put the sales tax on the ballot if they so choose. That was for information only. I believe we then go on to, there's no minutes to approve, so old and new business.
I believe, we then go on to, um, there's no minutes to approve, so old and new business? We wanna go back to old and new business? Roxanne?
The city council supported asking our community to decline to sign initiative fifteen fifty-two, which would ban transgender people from bathrooms. And I was really happy to hear during our Pride Weekend that the people that were trying to gather signatures failed. So, therefore, this will not go on the ballot. And so, I like to think that, you know, optimistically, we had a say in that, and I really thank everybody that supported that initiative, and the fact that that never went to the ballot is very meaningful for so many people in our state.
Pinky?
Uh, this weekend, I had an opportunity to participate in our pride parade and in our festival, and, uh, I just wanna thank all the volunteers, our Bellingham Police Department and our firefighters for volunteering and participating and making an absolutely great day where we got to celebrate diversity and freedom in our beautiful city. So, I just wanted to thank everybody who participated and attended. We have an amazing city.
April?
Um, I wanted to just, I guess I'm asking for help with process. We decided, we voted to start a justice committee, um, and then the process, I know Roxanne would be asked us to make sure we're being, uh, reasonable with our, I guess, following order on who we elect to that. So, is that something that we can do this evening? Is that something that has to be brought to a different committee?
No, we could do that anytime, um, the council body to appoint the chair and the two new members to the justice committee. We don't have to do it tonight, but we could do it tonight. I don't know if people feel prepared to nominate and vote on, on membership for the new justice committee or not. For the public, a justice committee would be taking over some of the issues that we currently potentially might go into community development, or might go into the public safety division, to kinda focus a lot of the issues that we're talking about now with the judicial system and broader justice issues, to, to direct those to, uh, one particular committee, which may or may not be a standing committee for long, um, but it's, it's currently, we just created a new standing committee. What is the will? Do you wanna vote on membership tonight, Pinky?
Uh, I, I wouldn't mind if we had a little bit of opportunity to flush this out a little bit and talk about when it's gonna be and all of those other things before we, I'm very supportive, but I'd like to look at this a little broader on what we're gonna, what it's gonna encompass, when it's gonna be, those kinds of things.
Okay, so.
Dan? And then Terry?
I'm, I'm not prepared to, to have that tonight. I think that there need, I, I echo Councilmember, Councilmember Vargas's opinion that, that we need to have a little more background on this, but I do support it.
Terry?
Yep, and I, I think it should be, we should have some more time with it. One, we don't know, we just heard about it today, we don't know who all up here wants to be on it, even. We've heard a couple people, but we haven't, you know, that doesn't mean others. So, people should have a chance to see what it's all about, and they wanna be on it, and so we can vote on that, and people can consider it.
Like, the, the work of the committee was gonna be those committee members working with the judicial arm and figuring out exactly what we'd be looking at. So, I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and work with Darlene and take a look at those things, and if any other council members are interested. Uh, and then I'll just put an agenda bill in, and we'll have it in the committee.
Yeah, we, we could either do it with an agenda bill and committee the whole, or just bring up an old business. It probably would be good if you were to write up a little something, um, on, on the scope of the committee and possible subjects that would be referred to the committee. The way our committee structure works is anything referred to the committee by the council must be accepted. Otherwise, the committee chair, um, has the control of the agenda for that committee, which presumably would be developed with the other committee members. So, that's how our committee structure works. So, we'll bring that back in two weeks or four weeks, depending. Okay? Anything else under old and new? Um, I would like to mention that the Vera Institute did report today, but we had a missed opportunity. We didn't schedule them to present to the city council. So, I've, I've talked with the county council member who's in charge of that, and, um, we're talking about it with this body. The next time they come back in fall, we're gonna try to schedule it so they also give a, a brief presentation to our council, assuming the days line up nicely, which they may or may not do. Uh, finally, I'd like to mention that, uh, a local group, not the city, uh, held a homeless person summit in Maritime Heritage Park this last Saturday, which I attended. Um, it was a, uh, really excellent event. It was a listening session for people to take down the stories and understand what people experiencing homelessness faces challenges. And this is, the issue of homelessness and affordable housing, low-income housing has been something the city's been working on, uh, increasingly over the last few years. And that's one of the things, reason why I thought it important to report about that. Anything else under old and new? Okay, executive session report. We had two items in executive session. Um, one was litigation, there was potential litigation, and the litigation matter of Swaddish versus City of Bellingham, we were provided with information, but it was for information only, discussion, no action was taken.[1741.53]